No meeting to order. Start off with pledge allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with a ready and justice for all.
It's a nice footage to tell apart, Chad.
Yeah. Anyone public, anyone here for public comment?
We don't like have a public comment to make. We just kind of.
Oh, yeah.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
And rare.
Both of you saying?
Yes.
Try not to let the excitement overwhelm you. We'll try to tone it down a little bit tonight. So we'll move on to swearing in of councilors. Well, it's just Councilman Hawkins, is it? We'll have to get Jim in the next meeting.
Jim Hawkins, can I have your by telephone?
I don't.
You can. I didn't know it was him first.
Okay. All right, so against the vote, Tina, for me, for Vermont Home Collegians. So I, Timothy S. Hawkins.
I, Timothy S. Hawkins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will be true and faithful to the State of Vermont.
That I will be true and faithful to the State of Vermont.
And that I will not directly or indirectly.
That I will not directly or indirectly.
Do any act of thing injurious to the Constitution.
Do any act of thing injurious to the Constitution.
Or government thereof.
Or government thereof.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
Under the pains and penalties of perjury.
And your oath of office, I, Timothy S. Hawkins.
I, Timothy S. Hawkins.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute the office of city council member.
That I will faithfully execute the office of city council member.
For Ward 1.
For Ward 1.
For the State of Vermont.
State of Vermont.
And will therein do equal right and justice.
And will therein do equal right and justice.
To all persons to the best of my judgment and ability.
To all persons to the best of my judgment and ability.
According to law.
According to law.
So help me God.
So help me God. Thank you very much.
Welcome, Mr. Hawkins.
Thanks. I'd be back and hope to serve Ward 1 as well as I have in the past, if you think I have been serving well in the past.
Okay, Chad, you want to?
Yeah, I'd like to amend the agenda to move item number seven up to actually number five, so we can do liquor control and get Curry out of here.
So Curry, I mentioned earlier, Dom's going to check to see if there's any reason we can't do it, but there's no sense of having you wait around until the middle of the meeting. We'll try to start off with it.
Okay, sure.
And then.
I usually just hang out at the council anyway.
Well.
I do appreciate it.
If you have some other places you have to be, it helps you.
Second.
So we have a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. So Curry, if you want to touch on the, they made catch-off cards.
No, no worries. Curry, get out of there. What's about that?
Oh, okay. Yes, and I do have just some approvals. I don't know if you can call in for the person.
Why don't we?
Make a motion to approve Section 2, Action A through H for the licenses as placed, presented on the council, on the agenda.
Second.
Sorry, I was wondering if I could also add to the minutes back in time, so we did our application today and they should be on the spreadsheet as well.
Well, I'll amend that motion to add letter I back in time under Section 2, right below hometown beverage and redemption.
And I'm okay with that change.
Any other questions, or Thomas?
I just have a, oh, on that section?
Yeah, so we'll vote on that.
Provided that all of those fulfill the requirement of the licensure.
So, yeah, absolutely. So the, we are missing one inspection, but other than that, everything else is, all the other establishments have everything they need to be submitted. So I would submit the other one until we have all the parts to it.
So we have a motion and a second to accept A through Y on number two. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposition, say no. Hearing none, motion passes. Thank you, Curry.
All right, and so I do have next section, under violations, old boundary at North Federal, an administrative penalty, first with this letter warning, heavy violation salesmonary person.
Katie, yep, Katie's there.
Hi, hi, everybody.
Is there a chair that we can?
Sure, you can. I'll pop over here. Sure.
Thank you for coming in.
Oh, no.
You want to introduce yourself?
Hi, I'm Katie, the owner of the old company at North Federal. So yes, that Sunday, one of my servers was from and did ask for ID but failed to recognize the date and proceeded to serve a 19-0. What we've done as an organization since then, we've had large staff meetings, we've had individual meetings, we recognize that we don't want to be in this spot again, so it's become very much a cultural thing in the restaurant that it doesn't happen again. Our new mantra is check the date if it's 98. If they look 40, pardon. So our goal is to like never be in this situation again, never have it happen again. We've also made it aware to all the employees that if anybody is off serving, anybody under age is immediate termination. Not that we want to have that happen, but it has to happen because it can't happen again. So, that's on that.
Thank you for that.
Yeah.
Any questions for Katie? Tim, I'm new to this part of it. Katie, you've been.
Me too.
But Tim, you need a comment then.
This is, I think, I was kind of surprised at the warning letter that you got from the State of Vermont for this type of offense. And in our ordinance, I misspoke earlier, this is actually a Class A violation under our ordinance, and which is something more severe than what you got with this warning.
Right.
But I think you're probably going, you're doing the right thing.
Oh, absolutely. And, you know, I think for us it was eye-opening that as much as training and you do, you have to be on top of it every day. It has to be a cultural thing. And that's what made us realize that. Moving forward, you know, we have a concert series coming up. So now it's like, okay, we have to have a bouncer at the door who's checking out where you can't, if you're number 21, you can't even get in there. We really are taking this very seriously.
And don't you normally have someone standing there anyway to see people?
Yes, yes. And at the time of violation, I was actually not in the restaurant, unfortunately. And when I arrived, he was sitting at the bar and telling me what had happened.
Is the employee still there?
Yes, yes, the employee's, she's a school teacher who's been with the company for many years, but she's also aware that there will be no second chance. And now moving forward, everybody's aware that no one gets a second chance.
Any other questions for Katie? Curry, anything to share? You're good. Katie, anything?
I've got everything I wanted to say.
I agree with Tim. Thank you for taking those initiatives to reduce or limit the opportunities for that.
Absolutely.
So we appreciate that. On a side note, thank you for buying the business and opening it up, and hopefully business is going well for you.
It's going very well. We're here now for a busy summer, so.
I went in today thinking I might sit on the patio, but it's not.
No, we have some clothes. We wanted to, we're ready. We'll have lots of music this summer, too, Friday and Saturday nights as well on Courtyard, so it's going to be a good summer.
I will tell you, I had a closing on the other day with some people at Bull's Lane, which is, you know, not a mile, few miles from you, but it's a little fair distance from you, that they were just had mentioned that they can hear your music joyfully.
Oh, okay. I wouldn't have thought you left, because Friday and Saturday is just acoustic, but Thursdays can be a little bit more.
Yeah, enjoying it.
Okay, good. Who don't want to upset anybody?
Like we can hear Little League during the summer.
Yeah.
Oh, my pleasure. Hearing, no other questions? Katie, thank you for coming in.
No. Hope to see you all first.
Thank you.
Bring your IDs.
I will. Katie, thanks. Curry, you out of the business?
No.
Move to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, is it a second?
Second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion accepted, so we are out of liquor control and entering back into the council I think our visitors saw that, I think we're headed down this little road. Curry, you want to stick around?
Do you want to invite the others in?
No.
I think we can quickly get through number five.
We do five.
Make motion to elect Chad, our nominated Chad's voter, as council president.
Second.
Any other nominations? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay.
With the consent.
Yeah, with the consent, yeah. Can't be easy all the time, Chad. So are they in the building? Yeah?
I think I didn't come up.
Don't think they're coming. So we might as well wait because the other stuff is a little more involved, so we'll let them get settled.
Hey, Tim.
Over here. How was dinner?
I took you others out for dinner because I've got to butter them up. And I think they lost their order.
Oh, yeah?
So we waited on our food for a half an hour, basically eight and three seconds. Sorry about being late, but.
The internal controls in the kitchen aren't quite with these.
That's right. We'll have to raise their tax, their assessment and talk about, or if you went to Twigs and they got the twigs.
I was going to say if the camera's on, we won't want too much rest. You can do it. Could do 11.
Yep. I'll watch it there.
Scott, how are you?
Well, how are you? Good, good. We have them down there. Supposedly, we can send it ready for you.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Watch your feet there.
Sure.
Welcome. Thank you. Thank you for joining us tonight.
We appreciate the invite.
So we're on to our item number six on our agenda, which is the audit presentation. If you'd like to give, introduce yourselves and then we'll take it from there.
My name is Scott McIntyre. I'm one of the principals or partners of Ole Ants &amp; Heath overseeing the audit here in St. Albans. With me is Alina Forsak, one of our audit managers, who was here on site with our staff to execute our audit procedures of our audit of your financial statements for the year ended June 30, 2018. And as I said a minute ago, we appreciate the invite to come in. We think communication with the elected boards is a critical component to the audit, and probably the most important thing we can report to the city tonight, you as an elected board, truly nothing to do with the numbers, that is to let you know how our audit of your financial statements went. I'm very pleased to be able to report that our audit of your financial statements went well. In the most basic terms that I can think of, what we really mean by that is we found the books and records to be in good working order. Key account reconciliations were performed on a regular and timely basis, and as a result of those things that I'm here reporting tonight, we did not need to propose any significant audit entries as a result of the work we did. We do assist in the compiling of the comprehensive annual financial report that the city files, but most of that really is typing this report, and really there is some convert, what we generally refer to as conversion entries, some of your modified accrual basis funds, we assist when converting them to the full accrual basis of accounting. So that just gives you a little bit of a background and hopefully a little bit of perspective on how our audit went. Again, we think it went very well. There was some transition in the accounting folks here in St. Albans, but even with that, we were able to complete our work in a very timely manner. And the city filed this comprehensive annual financial report as it has done for the last several years with a national oversight agency, it's the GFOA or Government Finance Officers Association, and you're submitting this CAFR to them for their review, and we all have the expectation that, as has been the case for several years, they will award you a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. I'm going to speak just one more subject matter, then Alina's going to walk through some of the high points of the fund basis financial statements. I say fund basis, there's really two different perspectives in here, a long-term perspective, and then there's the funds. And we're going to focus on the funds this evening. If there are questions on the long-term perspective financial statements, I think we can probably answer them, but most readers do still focus on the funds, that being the general fund and some of your capital projects. But the last thing that I want to speak about, and then I'll turn it over to Alina, just on page 13 of this CAFR, if you have it, you can turn to it. If not, it's not really all that necessary, but page 32, pardon me, I'm going to ask you to turn to page 32 in a moment. Page 13 is our independent auditor's report on your financial statements. Goes on for several pages. I can summarize it really quickly. In our opinion, based on following the two types, the two sets of auditing standards we are required to follow, based on our audit, your financial statements are totally in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles for local governments here in the United States. Again, it was two sets of standards, there's generally accepted auditing standards, and because you are a recipient of federal grants, we are required to follow government auditing standards as well as the more generally accepted. There's so many similarities, but there's some minor differences between the two. But really, the highlight isn't so much the auditing standards that were followed, it's our opinion, which says that in our opinion, your financial statements are in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. Sometimes referred to as a clean or unmodified opinion, has no qualifications to it, so. And with that, I'd like, I'm going to turn it over to Alina to talk about some of the numbers, and then I'll recap when she's done talking about some of the funds. I'll just quickly walk through some of our management letter recommendations, but Alina's going to start on page 32 of your financial statements.
Have you had the copy correct?
On page 32, your governmental funds balance sheet, the first fund, general fund, has a fund balance of $1.6 million at year end on June 30, 18. If you look at that fund balance component of the balance sheet, there's a non-stable fund balance, and that's really just an offset for prepaid items, inventures, and assets held for retail, which are reported above in the assets category. And then there's a minor restricted fund balance, and in a previous year, June 30, 17, there was a committed fund balance, actually. Currently, it's not there, but unassigned fund balance is $1.3 million. And unassigned fund balance for general fund didn't go up by $1.2 million, but that previously committed fund balance, which was committed by city management and city council for community development and redevelopment purposes, because the purpose constraints were removed from that, it's currently reclassified to unassigned fund balance, which accounts for about that $1.2 million increase. And then you have some major funds to the right, TIP debt service fund, sidewalk, TIP Capital Project, and Federal Street. And although TIP doesn't show balance here, but if you look on the governmental funds statement of revenues and expenditures on the following page, you can see that that's because there's a transfer in to cover the shortage between incremental tax revenue and debt service that brings this balance to zero. And the sidewalk fund, you can see there is a deficit of $1.4 million. There is a line of credit on there in the liability section that's covering that deficit, and the maximum balance for that line of credit is $1.75 million. And the TIP Capital Project Fund shows a deficit of $1.9 million. That is funded by the future issues of debt. There was a February 19 Vermont municipal bond bank note issuance of $1.95 million. And there's the Federal Street project, which doesn't really show much on the balance sheet, but if you look again on page 33 in the income statement, there was a transfer in of $1.7 million primarily from water and sewer and the small project for TIP Capital Project that brings that balance to zero. And the non-major funds, you can see that's just minor funds combined together in total. And then if they go to page 35, this is where your enterprise funds are recorded. If you look at different other funds in the asset section for water and wastewater, that's really the cash position of the funds. And in comparison, prior year, cash position of the water fund was about $1.5 million, currently a million. And for the wastewater fund, about $1.5 million currently, and prior year was $2.5 million. So you can see that the cash position has been decreasing. And on the following page, which is the statement of revenues and expenses for the enterprise fund, you can see that the reason for that is that transfers out of $2.2 million. And third number up from the bottom is where you can see that. And as we mentioned, that there was a large project worth that went to the Federal Street, but there was also some other capital projects in there as well. And that is your governmental and enterprise funds, and if you have any other questions, we can address them on the financial statements, but there are notes here that you can read it.
Before I, come back to me and before I talk about the management letter, just wanted to focus a little bit more on page 33, which is, as Alina pointed out, the governmental funds statement of revenues and expenditures. And I'm focused for just a second in that first column of numbers, and I think it's the third number up from the bottom, it's the net change in the fund balance of the general fund, and you see that the number is in parentheses of 100, just short of $109,000 in parentheses, indicating that the expenditures exceeded the revenues, or the outflows of resources exceeded the inflows of resources. Fiscal year 18 represents about the fourth year in a row, that that third number up from the bottom is in parentheses. So we just wanted to make sure that we bring that to the discussion here tonight. I don't think it surprises anyone, based on our conversations with the administration, but it is the fourth year in a row for that. Coupled with the decrease in the cash position in the enterprise funds, we just wanted to make sure we brought these two things to the conversation tonight, and that continued monitoring of the liquidity of these funds. We think there is good monitoring of the liquidity of these funds, but continued monitoring of the liquidity of these funds will remain essential for the City of St. Albans. The last thing I want to say, and just again focusing on that, $108,000. Remember Alina, when she was talking about the increase to the unassigned fund balance? Again, just to reemphasize, it previously was called committed fund balance. This year, the dollars that were in that bucket, and I realize it's very generic terminology, the bucket called committed fund balance, is those dollars have just gone down to unassigned. We think it's really important that all readers understand that, sure, it may look like unassigned fund balance went up by $1.2 million, but a lot of that is that purpose constraints were removed on some dollars that were committed, and when those constraints are removed, those dollars drop down to unassigned. So the increase isn't a result of, you know, a million dollars came in greater than the revenue budget anticipated. The increase in that key account, the unassigned fund balance, is really a reclassification from a prior balance that was considered committed. So I just wanted to make sure that we emphasize that point. We don't need to turn to it, but the city did a nice job, I believe it's on page 24 of your management's discussion analysis, which is a great resource to go back to at a later point in time to, for readers to understand why certain key account balances changed. And on page 24, the city did an excellent job in really spelling out that these dollars, that this increase in unassigned fund balance is just as we tried to articulate, that it was previously committed, those constraints were removed, and the dollars increased. As a result, the increase went to unassigned fund balance.
Scott, if I may for a minute?
Of course.
I argued for that change with the auditors, and committed typically means, maybe not typically, but often means committed by a hierarchy or even a council. For instance, committed would be if we borrowed money through a voter-approved bond but hadn't spent it, that's committed money that can only be formed with the voters authorized. In this case, it's unassigned because the folks who determine how the redevelopment fund is used is the council, and if the council wants to use it for a property purchase, that's a decision of the council not to vote, and if the council wants to use it for, in essence, whatever the council manager agree on, that's what it's for. So unassigned, I thought was a better classification. And the definition of redevelopment, at least in my eyes, is pretty broad, so we've called this the redevelopment fund, but really, you're the folks who determine what exactly that means and what the uses of those funds are.
I'm going to speak very quickly on a couple of our recommendations in our management letter, and then if there are any other questions on the financials or our audit process that I described very briefly, we certainly can try to answer them. We do just a couple of recommendations, but before I talk about those, I think it's important to just point out page one and page two of our management letter, and I see some folks, particularly this lady next to me looking in her CAFR for the management letter. It's probably, it's not there. I, I'll joke and say, we have a special version, we put it all in one binder, but the management letter is in a separate report. Mine's in mind report, but it's just because I put it in one place, so I don't have to go to two separate reports. I see some other members of the council have the management letter. Even if you don't have it present, I'm going to speak generically about it, and again, probably the most important thing in this management letter to be communicated to the group isn't in one of the three issues that we'll talk about in just a moment, it's really on the introductory letter, which is on page one and two. That letter tells you a little bit about what we do, and just as importantly, what we don't do. You know, we test transactions and we look at internal control systems, but we do not look at every single transaction that goes through the books and records here in St. Albans and for any of our other clients. So that's one of the things that's in the auditor language that's in page one and two, but that's me using very basic terms that I usually like to do. The other thing that's in this introductory letter is it tells you that these are recommendations for your consideration. Auditing standards require, and it's outlined in this introductory letter, if we think, based on our judgment, a control deficiency or an internal control deficiency rises to a certain level, that we would consider it to be a significant deficiency, or if it rises to, in our judgment, a level that's even higher than that, it would be considered a material weakness. And none, we did not, you know, based on the work we did, we do not see any material weaknesses in the, we did not find any material weaknesses in the systems of internal control here in the City of St. Albans. These three recommendations are categorized, as the management letter comments, they are not significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. In fact, the first one is essentially, I'll speak about it, but subsequent to the issuance of this report, we are certainly are aware that it has been addressed or cured. A year ago, there were some new single audit requirements. Single audit is a term that, as I mentioned before, as a recipient of federal grants, you are required to have a single audit, that's what we do, and some of those procedures focus strictly on the expenditures of the federal dollars. Well, Uniform Guidance is something that was put out by the federal government, the Office of Management and Budget, a couple of years ago. And just to sort of summarize it as plainly as I can, it really increased the required documentation from the policies and procedures that you and every other local government, state governments as well, were required to have if you were a recipient and entity that extended for federal grants. We list the four bullet items there. Again, subsequent to the writing of this report, we were provided a copy of the Uniform Guidance policies and procedures that the City of St. Albans implemented, so that's a great response to our recommendation. Issue number two is to prepare for GASB statements number 84 and 87. GASB, I don't think either one of us mentioned it, if anyone is not aware, that's an acronym for the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. for the Governmental Accounting Standards Board. They're the folks that set the rules by which you do your accounting and financial reporting. We don't set those rules. We come in and basically look to see that you're following those rules. And these are a couple of relatively new rules, correction, I mean, be more precise, rules that will become applicable over the next couple of years. One deals with fiduciary activities, and the other deals with leases. The one that deals with leases is probably most applicable to you here in St. Albans. In the past, as St. Albans and so many local governments, a number of them referred to as operating leases, that really aren't, don't show as either an asset or a liability in your balance sheets, the accounting standards for that are going to change. So you're really going to need to do a comprehensive inventory of all the leases and evaluate whether or not they need to be brought on to the long-term perspective balance sheet of the city. We didn't really talk about the long-term perspective, again, we can, but some work to do there to implement that GASB standard.
Operating leases, they're talking about like the copiers and the leases like that?
Absolutely, it could be those, yeah, no doubt.
It's actually not a bad example. If you sign up, you know, you see the invoices for copiers, but when you, the copiers are all under contract for five years. So in theory, if you want to get rid of the copier, you've got to buy it in contract.
And that's not shown in here now, it's not required to be shown in here now. And lastly, third issue is to approve controls over payroll, as we say there in some of the departments, and you see this from time to time in some smaller, smaller communities, that the oversight and the actual approval of the individual time cards is not as, is not as tight as it could be. So we're really recommending you approve the internal controls over payroll and just take, in some times in small departments, it takes some monitoring of individuals outside of those departments to be the approver of the actual time charges, because sometimes the departments are small enough that there isn't a proper segregation of duty. So it may have to expand outside of the departments we reference here, perhaps to the finance department to be the ultimate approver, if you will, of those time charges. That's a very, very quick walkthrough of our audits. Again, our procedures went very smoothly. Alina talked about the funds. I just wanted to summarize, you know, just continue to monitor those cash positions of, in particular, the general fund, the water fund and the sewer fund. On the face of the balance sheet of the water and sewer enterprise, it's called due to and due to, due to and due from other funds. It's really, it's a very common way that governments report their cash position. Continue to be very vigilant on those, and as they have crept down a little bit over the past couple of years, so be very vigilant there. With that, we'll try to answer any questions that the council may have.
What, is this your first year doing St. Albans?
This is our third year.
Third year. And your recommendation for rotation of auditors, is there, do you have one?
We do. I don't necessarily have a number. It is not uncommon that the GFOA, that's the acronym that I used earlier that you mentioned, CAFR, too, they put out a lot of best practice publications. They come right up and said that, you know, the fact of the matter is, there are not a lot of CPA firms that do governmental work, and the GFOA knows that. And the GFOA, as well as auditing standards, have stopped well short of saying it's a mandatory rotation the way there is with the public companies. What we most often see is, when it creeps up to be about ten years, that's when governments will often consider a change.
Is it the same, in the last three years, has it been the same individuals?
It has been both Alina and I, as the shareholder and audit manager, but our staff, even at the supervisory level, on this engagement changed in this, in this third year. It was an individual, he happens to live in the state of Vermont, and he works remotely for us, and does a number of, much of our work here in the state.
Any other questions? Ten, okay, Murray, Michael? Dom? I think we're all set. Thank you for coming in, making the time.
Thank you.
Do we have, um, we have a, what does that come from? I don't know if we're working out.
I think we have two people, we put on our P last night, and it was two people already.
Well, we switched halfway through.
Okay.
The, because we developed a conflict measure. The, let's return to this and other business.
Okay. Tom, do you have anything you want to finish this discussion with?
About that specific issue?
No, just in general.
Um, you can generally, you know, we talked about cash a little bit. He's right, our cash position has gotten a little bit worse over the years, but that's mostly because the redevelopment fund is being invested. So when you buy property, you know, your cash position goes down. The redevelopment fund isn't, doesn't have a permanent financing source to be coordinated yet, hopefully it will someday. That cash comes back to us in the form of a much higher grand list over time, so, you know, it's up to the whole team to make sure those are wise investments, but it's what it was for, right?
All right, let's move on to, let's see, item number eight, council resolution regarding substantial change and procedural redaction. Dom, I'll turn that over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There's a resolution in your packet relating to the city's tax income and finance district, and various different notifications with the Vermont Economic Projects Council. We're circling back to them with some additional updates on additional projects, financial plan, our past projects. Most of us laid out in the memo, and I guess council could consider a motion there.
So everyone has before you in your packet the resolution regarding substantial change in the TIP process. Entertain a motion to approve the resolution?
I approve the application for substantial change and validation of previous notice requirements.
Second. We have a motion by Chad, seconded by Mike. Are there any comments or questions? Hearing none, all votes in favor of the resolution as presented. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Hearing none, the resolution is approved, and we will need signatures from everyone on our.
Let's start just with Murray, can I do that?
That ends up active.
Do you want her to sign her copy?
Yes.
Next item on the agenda is number nine, continued reading and public hearing for ordinance regulating solid waste, also known as a trash. Have a copy of that in your packet? Dom, I'll turn it over to you to give an overview.
Thank you. The work of the located line. Thank you, so this came over the weekend from Jim Barlow, who did some drafting. You should have the retract changes version in your packet. I think we tried to capture all the comments from the last meeting on section four, line twenty-two. We made clear the use of uncovered bins, rid with, and this is Jim's concern. Twenty-seven, we've changed the requirement that the screen to, at the discreet location of view from the street and adjacent property.
I think that's the wrong version of discreet. I guess we spelled.
Okay.
Did I get it right? Yeah. That word means a different thing.
That one.
Which is, could be used there, but I don't think that's what we meant, we meant.
No, I know, you were talking about, discernible is this one.
Thank you, Ms. Webster.
Sorry. I believe I'm weary, I'm, whatever.
I was just going to say that. That's how they always get started.
Do you have a comment?
I have a couple of questions. So uncovered bins, the use of uncovered bins is prohibited. What if we just have a bin, but we just leave the top open all the time? So should we have some kind of language in there that says the cover is secured?
I thought that was in there.
If it's in there, it's in there.
Says all such containers shall be covered.
Okay. And then the other thing that I've heard people say is often the truck will pick up, the garbage truck will pick up like a load of paper, and as they're driving down the road, it's just blowing right out the back. How do we deal with that?
Well, my information is we deal with that through the licensing process, through the holler, and with the phone call to the holler. We can consider adding something in here, but my inclination is it's probably there.
Okay. I've only seen, personally, I've only seen it once, where I think they had one of those ones that came up and dumped it over, and then they were driving off, and it was blowing all over, because I think it's just a big open area for the most part.
Yeah. I know, they're regulated as well, and a lot of that, those requirements tend to show up in the solid waste regulations for the hollers and trash positions.
Okay. All right, okay.
Can I just make sure I'm understanding a piece of this correctly? Slides thirty-four, thirty-five, where it talks about when you can put a bin out, when you put a container out. So not before nine AM, but nine AM of the day preceding collection, so if my collection day is Tuesday, I can't put it out any earlier than Monday at nine, or Tuesday at nine?
No, you can't on Monday.
Not the day of collection, the day prior to collection.
Put it out nine oh one on the day before the collection, so then it's set out there.
A day. Okay.
So if you're trash day, Thursday, Tuesday, you can put it out on Monday, it's got to be in by Wednesday.
Got it, makes sense, thank you.
Did you see the, that thing floating around Facebook about the, somebody's, would encourage to develop a screen for the trash? You didn't see this?
Another Facebook type of guy.
They, the, I don't.
Was that the mayor's thing again?
No, this is somebody who wasn't happy about the screening requirement. Built the fence with five fingers.
Oh, I saw that.
And one of the fingers was longer than the other's.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think I wrote back.
That was a gate, I thought, though.
I didn't see it?
No, 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 no.
Westford solution?
No, it's a Westford, exactly. It was just voted by somebody in the city district. I was going to send it to you, but you didn't have our Facebook. I was going to send it to Denise.
Give some of the boss.
I'm wondering, the only thing I had was that you have a tote defined, but maybe we throw in a bin definition? That would be my only, as we talked about, use of uncovered bins is probably, is a bin, is the definition of the bin, the blue recycle bins that we have in the office.
Maybe, I'm not sure we need, do we need to define it if the point is just that it can't be something uncovered?
So is a bin anything less than a tote?
What do you see then?
Twenty-two.
I'd say someone wants to put out a clear plastic tote with a snap top on it, as long as the top's on it, I don't care. I don't know why you'd do that, but.
Yeah, it's a good point. I thought last time we talked about not, just referring everything as totes, because we were getting confused about the difference between bins and totes, and we were going to say, just use the word tote.
So we did, and then Jim said, if you're making it that uncovered bins are prohibited, make that explicit.
Okay.
Could say uncovered totes.
Uncovered containers of anything?
If Jim felt strongly about that, he'd be here.
I'm happy to add a definition of bins.
So we mean bins, mean those uncovered.
The blue.
Recycling, yeah, containers that go along your.
Isn't a bin anything other than a tote that's used to contain trash or recyclables? Right?
Yeah, that sounds good.
It's not a tote.
It's a bin?
If it's otherwise acceptable, maybe we could consider it for approvals for search duty, protection.
Motion, in that effect?
I move we adopt the first reading of the solid waste ordinance to include the definition of a bin.
Your second?
Second.
Motion by Chad, seconded by Mike. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Motion to approve warrants, three twenty-nine, nineteen. We have a motion and second on warrants for three twenty-nine. All those in favor, say aye. Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to mayor's report. I had a few things. I mentioned it previously in discussion with Curry on, well, let me do what's on here. So standing committees, the standing committees now consist of safety.
Of safety, quality life, and science.
Any people have thoughts as to, do those cover that, what we want to do, or is there anything we want to adjust or change, or add?
You mean like adding another committee, is that what you're going to?
Maybe, I'm not sure what that may be, but.
In previous years, if we needed to add, we've asked volunteers, right? That seems to work. They're usually short-term if it's something else.
Does everyone know what committees you're on?
Yeah.
Unless you're changing the appointments from the previous day.
I have not changed any. I'm okay with that. Keep everything remaining the same. Anyone good with that?
Yeah.
Good. So we'll move on. Couple of things I had was I noticed, I thought Marty might be here, but I noticed the gates are still up on the parking garage, are still doing the energy audit.
Parking garage is falling on hard times. You want to give an update on that, Tom?
The server's fried. So I ordered a new one Saturday morning. Hope to have it installed within a week. I don't know if there was a power surge that did it, or if it was just end of light, but the server's fried. So a new system with more redundancy built in, so hopefully if it happens again, we'll have a couple backups in place to. So hopefully if it happens again, we'll have a couple of backups in place to get backup running faster.
So the home of the server is where?
At the garage.
So within the garage, just up?
Yeah.
Now, does that go, is there any, is there any commonality to that and the loss of the lights on Lake Street? Because something got fried there as well.
We've got electricians looking at that.
So.
And there may be.
They were built at two separate times. I don't feel like there's common contractors there.
There aren't common contractors, but after the Lake Street lights issue was fixed, the server kept running. And there's the two instances that have done that different times. But I think we are, we do have someone looking at, for the cause, the garage in general, there's an antenna that's been put up, there's the linkage to the lights on Lake Street. So we have someone looking at, just making sure this doesn't happen again.
So the gates will remain open until such time, till the server is repaired?
Yeah, we can't, we can't see anyone entering or exiting. And then with the, with the server down, if anyone's stuck in there, dispatch can't raise the arms because that's connected to the system. So we've just got to leave it up.
So nothing to do with an energy audit, I guess that was the original reason for?
It was. We were looking, there had been some power fluctuation issues and folks had gone in to see what was going on. And.
That's what they.
So it wasn't an energy, it wasn't an energy efficiency audit, it was a, how's the electrical system of the parking garage doing audit?
The last I'd heard is, I guess there's some consideration, there's a ton of power going into the garage, obviously, and there's some consideration that there's a, you know, more commercial software protection you can put on a facility like that, and that may be the course of action in the end.
Andy, can you share one of the costs on servers?
I haven't seen a number, I wouldn't hesitate to guess. Oh, the server?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, the server. Server plus the labor is probably going to be in the range of thirty-five hundred to four thousand.
And that's how old, how old's the parking garage?
About five years.
That's reasonable.
Yeah, I think. And it had shut off in, you know, about forty thousand hours, so.
Server didn't owe us anything more.
But it could have gone in a better manner.
The new one will have two hard drives, so if one fails, we'll have a backup and then we'll also do a offsite backup. So if it, something like a power surge happened and ruined the machine, we still need a new machine, but we have a couple of different options for restoring all the data to speed that up at least. But I guess if you get a power surge, doesn't matter what happens, you need a new machine.
So can we spin the marketing of the free parking for April Fool's Day or?
Parking holiday.
Spring, parking holiday.
Business support.
Spring fling.
That's up to you.
Thanks, Tom. I mentioned earlier, Curry, I don't know how many complaints you had on the lack of parking during an event in City Hall, and we want to consider a one space for fifteen minute parking. I'm thinking that it may be beneficial to maybe travel cup as well for people to run in and out, grab a cup of coffee, it's beneficial. So this came about by, you had a complaint, do I understand, or?
During the expo, I, it was a great turnout, but, you know, people do kind of come in and out just to pay a bill or register their dog. And so it was the, there was a bill that was out, so we had order bill, dog licenses, so it was pretty, lots of traffic coming in. So if you two were like, oh, I can find a place to park, that's not kind of unusual, but yeah, so just a few.
Did you share with them that there was free parking in the parking garage?
The parking garage, yeah.
I think we had free parking that day, right?
I think there was.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
So is that something, what's the process, Tom, to potentially do that? Are people open to that?
I'm wondering.
And how do you monitor it if we do?
We're also talking about moving the handicap space. And I'm worried about the interaction between those two. You know, then we could both of them right out in front of City Hall. You know, you're right, you think that's too much? Do you think it?
So you're changing the handicap from?
Right now, the handicap that's across the street.
Right.
You overwhelm the majority of people that use it, are using it to access City Hall. And they don't like the fact that they have to park there and then walk across the street. Is that fair? It's closer to that than I had.
It is fair. And the reason why it was put over there is because we could make that bump out on the other side more shallow, so you can leave your car and get right into the crosswalk. Whereas this bump out in front of City Hall, you'd have to go out in the street and get onto the ramp, up to the sidewalk. But we're going to look at other ways of doing it, and the reconstruction of Maine and Congress was going to give us an opportunity. But by and large, you know, you know, Dom's right, we do hear about that. We hear about how with the Streetscape project, we lost the handicap space that used to be in front of City Hall. We thought this was an improvement, but it wasn't.
So you're looking at it, I guess that's all that does.
Yeah, let's keep thinking about it and looking at, you know, process wise, what changes the ordinance is.
And I'm also sure fifteen minutes followed across the street is maybe a swap the two.
Yeah.
You're still worried about the crosswalk, you cross, you pay your bill again, I believe. That's the option as well.
Is there a driveway a little further down? We could like, I think, four or five spots down, they could go in that driveway onto the sidewalk on Main?
That is possible.
And put some closer to the elevator.
And you could say it's not even really a driveway, I don't know how many cars actually use that alley. But what we normally try to do is, whether it's a fifteen minute spot or a handicap spot, we try to make sure the businesses and property owners immediately adjacent are agreeable to it too. So there would be a process, you know, through some outreach and, you know, we'd have to make sure it works.
Good, so we'll, we'll let you do that, we'll see what comes up with.
Yeah.
Quickly on trucks on Upper Weldon, police departments made some headway with the GPS company government. We got a report back that they're working on that. We reached out to one of the larger trucking companies, Prime, which is based out of Springfield, Missouri, and the lady who I spoke to actually grew up in Mottillier, so we had a little bit of a connection, and she was going to get the word out to her drivers to focus on utilizing the interstate access road. So I don't know if there's improvements. Kate, you know better than I, but I'd be curious. I think, I'd like to think there's some diminishing effect of number of trucks on Upper Weldon.
Yeah, I do think it's improving, but I think what you're seeing is people are so tired of it, even though there are fewer trucks, every truck that goes by results in phone calls and texts to you, I know, and emails and stuff. So I don't, I don't know that people are that much happier about it. And somebody asked me about that idea about putting a camera somewhere so we could see who the trucks are, what the companies are. I don't know.
So one of the things I think that would help a lot is if we could get permission from the agency of transportation to put a sign on Route one of four. And I appreciate you getting out your, is that up at Mike? Yeah. So I'll copy it on the email I sent to the secretary. And he delegated it to one of his people, so I haven't learned that. But, and they're cycling through your committee on a pretty regular basis.
Yeah, I'll see you tomorrow.
Yeah, so I mean.
And we've, we already received a no from them on that, right?
Well, it was a long and complicated no, which sounded like it could have been a yes.
I asked them for something different than led to the complicated no, that I asked for temporary permission to put a sign in for three months. And the secretary referred it to his chief engineer. Who else can I look up and see who that is?
One sentence.
And that was, you know, easily a week ago. So the district office denied it, and I just, you know, if the secretary could say, we can let Saint Albans put up a sign for a couple of months, you know, that happens all the time. Right?
Excellent.
If it helps to get a dozen letters from people on the street to say that they'd love some help, I mean, people are like, they want to do something. I'm afraid they're starting to be a lawn signs that are not friendly to truckers, who is not really what we want.
More Westford solutions?
Is that?
More Westford solutions?
Right. I still look at.
So Michael, you checked on that and you report back?
I will absolutely do that tomorrow.
I more or less have taken over Greenup Day. Brad Jenkins, who had organized it with the Boy Scouts in the past, has stepped down, I think he did it for about eight years. I've met with the city school today to get their student government classes involved, and we're looking for probably twelve to fifteen, six to eight graders, a man. We're gonna, we're restricting the bag pickup spots to city school, senior center, Fulton Park, and Barlow. I know, I think you were involved in helping with Marie possibly. Anyone else wants to take a spot?
With Jen Barlow, of course.
And I'm thinking Greenup, Fourteenth Star has a group as well, but I need to publicize that. But in terms of what we will organize, we'll focus on those four spots. So I will be reaching out to see if you, Marie and, I would be damned.
I was to go to Taylor and the Boy Scouts there and go up into Ward Four, so if we're not going to do Taylor Park, then it was, I could go to the Fourteenth Star.
Fourteenth Star or Senior Center, Barlow. The town has kind of volunteers to do there, so, but we still, if we can get more volunteers and expand the pickup points, then we can do that. But I started off with four to begin with. And the other thing I had was, most of you may have seen the article in the paper, a suggestion that Kate made about trying to coordinate a combined select board council meeting of the town. No rush, but Brendan, he's always pitching that to the select board tonight in the town. If, if there is a favorable response on both ends, I'd sit with Dom and probably Carrie as well, and figure out what that agenda might look like and how we can start working forward on some things, so.
It works for me, it's been about ten years. You good with that?
Marie, you don't want anything to do with it, I heard?
I'm a whore.
Kate, you're good?
Absolutely.
For a, you're good?
For a few months, I went to there, because we don't have the second, the third Monday meeting, I did go to their third Monday meeting, and I found that really helpful too, because they had a couple of questions about what's going on in the city, and I was answering them. So maybe we can do that on a rotating basis every other month or something, have someone go to that meeting. That third meeting is usually fairly quick for them, so.
So I guess I'd like that people start thinking about how we might, what there is that we might be successful, we don't need to main, you know, the one I suggested to Brendan was getting that sidewalk from the, where it ends in the city up to Hardak. Traffic on Upper Congress is getting more and more and faster all the time, and a sidewalk would be beneficial, I think. So just a small, that could be a small success moving forward, and then we build off items like that and see how we can collaborate moving forward. That's all I had. Tim?
Um, a couple of things, easy ones. Steve Donahue from Fourteenth Star was this is kind of the year. Congratulations to him. I was pleased at the.
Can't interrupt, can I?
Yeah.
So that ceremony, I think, is June twelfth, Waterbury, I think it is, or I'll find out, share. I've gone on attending, but if anyone else is interested in supporting that, I'll get you the information.
I was pleased with the expo. However, I was trying to figure out how somebody could go to the expo who was working between, to try and better themselves and be able to utilize the expo, and between the hours of twelve and three. I had a call into, I think Katie, I can't think of her last name. And replayed phone tag a little bit, but that was one of the questions I was going to ask, because there was some very good employers, I think they're all employers, there was some very high-powered employers there, and if someone wanted to improve themselves, they were unable to utilize that. You can't just leave your job you're working at and say, I want to go to the job expo.
Can I touch on that?
Sure.
So this is twentieth year of the expo, we moved it from the complex, I say we, I'm one of probably eight organizations that helped organize it. So it's been around twenty years. When I first started, we went to six o'clock, so we went from one to six for public hours. The issue we ran into was, on the reverse of it, is trying to keep the vendors there who's getting paid till four or five and packing up and heading home. Not many of them were too excited about getting home at seven. So that made it tough, so we cut the hours back. And we still had people leaving early, so it's, it's really a catch-22 on how do we, how do we really encourage the vendors to stay for the hours that would probably be more ideal? That's why we sort of shop for the lunch hour, obviously if you're working in Burlington, it doesn't work. So it's something we've wrestled with, the committee has wrestled with for years, trying to figure out how to get that later crowd and keep, keep the vendors there at the same time. So I will share your, share your concern on that and see if we can, I mean, we've talked about going three to six, so we'll melt that around again.
I couldn't believe how many attendance.
Yeah, it was last time.
It was very good. Looked a different format in the past, there was seventy-five vendors, thirty-five might have been partners who did support services, you know, screen on training, CDO, whoever. This year, we just focus on those businesses that we're actually trying to get the name out there and actually had openings or expect to have openings soon. So it was really focused on that, on those job openings, so. It was very well received having it here at City Hall. One thing we did was, in the past, we had fed all the vendors, that was included in their feed. Now, this year, we've sort of pushed them out onto Main Street to go, you know, go to the restaurants and buy lunch and whatnot, so I think that could be successful as well. Anything else to? Kate?
No.
Marie, you're good? Mike?
I would just say that the House on, with only one vote, passed a six billion dollar state budget last week, and revenue tax to go with it, so I think things are going relatively smooth in Mottillier, and there aren't a whole lot of big surprises. I think the big thing that will have the most impact to us is, the Senate is really struggling to think about what to do about water quality funding, and hasn't really come up with any town recommendation yet. So we're kind of in the same old place, it's like Groundhog Day. So I'll continue to be monitoring that closely, and I think there are some interesting conversations happening from unlikely folks around the possibility of, instead of having to invest in wastewater infrastructure that we might consider a kind of phosphorus cap and trade system, and we may be able to spend less dollars paying our neighbors in agricultural community and putting some money in their pockets to have higher impact but lower cost projects to reduce phosphorus loading in our watershed. So stay tuned for more on that. When I started to hear some of my usual people who aren't willing to do those kinds of things say that it's a viable alternative, so we don't have to raise a lot more revenue, I think we're going to have some track cards and support for more innovative ways to deal with phosphorus in the coming couple of years, so.
Does the governor's proposal get any traction, or is that?
Not as such. I mean, I think the governor's proposal around the estate tax, I think we did, in the revenue bill, we compromised with the governor and did a lot of things, but we also spent the money, so some of that went to water quality, but there's about a ten million dollar gap still, depending on how you count it, it's twenty million dollars.
Cool.
You know, so six point one billion dollars, we're going to end up having a knockdown, dragout over the last ten or twenty million. It's kind of how it goes.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, Kate and Marie gave me theirs, that's all the time. Jessica, I just have a couple of things, the alleyway down by Twiggs, someone said that that's kind of getting kind of grubby, so I don't know, now that it's a little bit warmer, we can think about cleaning that out, and same complaint as always, it's not very well lit, so, I don't know.
Are there new lights going in there at some point?
Are new lights out?
I don't think, Marty, Marty or Tony would know, we haven't asked them, I don't think so, yeah.
But there are new lights going in, right?
Yeah, there's a plan, there's a plan.
There's going to be pots and new ones, right?
Okay, so the foodlet city lights, the crosswalk lights, those are still flashing randomly, sometimes they're off, sometimes they're on, I don't know what's going on with them. And do we have, actually I hit up with you offline on this one, Dom, but my last one is, at one point, when you came out of the parking garage, that backlot, between certain hours, it was turn right only. So I've had two people call me, one, they landed on the hood of a car, and the other one was a close call, but I think they're having a hard time seeing the people coming down Lake Street, and they're trying to get out and make the, when they don't see anyone coming, and make that left-hand turn up on the lake. So I don't know what we thought about adding that, no left turn between the hours, I can't remember what, I think it was like after four thirty.
Put it back.
Seven and five, yeah, I don't know.
Was it rush hour, rush hour thing?
Yeah.
Is that sun down?
It never went back up.
Never went back up, probably.
Climate conditioner, that'll be back up.
Agreed. So, I think that was it. The other one I'll have to do.
I forgot to mention one thing, because it seems like it's been a long time ago, but a couple weeks ago, my basement flooded, and I was down in Mottillier, and, you know, calling the.
Thank you.
A private service was going to be hours and hours, and Marty and I already had a couple of guys helping other people that were dealing with the water coming in the basements because of that big thaw, and they came in and helped pump us out, and we're doing that, you know, hopping to the next house too, and it was just wonderful to have some help in a bad situation, so very much appreciate our customer service with Public Works, you've been really helpful until the professionals arrived and fixed the, fixed the deal. Thank you.
Anything else for the good of the cause?
Motion to adjourn.
Dom, you're good, Curry, you're good? I've got motion to adjourn, seconded by Tim, I want to say that.
Aye.
Aye.